You want to do roll call, dear?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
All right, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have two. Noel, are you speaking? So far, Mayor, we only have two public speakers. If anyone else needs to speak, we need them now. If not, you've waived the opportunity to do so. We got three. David, you're now two because Noel was slow. Jim Natlaskey, followed by David Kozinski, followed by Noel Hollingsworth. Followed by Debbie Green.
Hey, Jim Laskey, 5780 Southwest 199th Avenue. At one of the last meetings, I was remarking about a propane tank. I think it was 1,000 gallons was going to be buried five feet away from my property line. I think, as we've all seen in the last couple of weeks, there's been some gas incidents in the area, one of which blew up a shopping center, okay, through a pizza joint. So how much vapor could there have been in a pizza joint? They're not exactly the biggest structures in the world. So if you look at the size of the boom compared to the size of the containment, and what probably ignited it was one of the starters in either the refrigeration units or whatever else kicks on inside a pizza joint when they're not there. That's a problem. Down in Coconut Grove, you've got them burning off a tank right now. Do you think it's any bigger than 1,000 gallons? It's already two days they've had. How many people evacuated in radius around that apartment building of how far? Well, that raises the protocol for what Davy or Cooper City or anybody else is going to have to do to be cautious if this happens again. That gets to be expensive, and it also must be very dangerous where they wouldn't be evacuating a radius like that. So I suggest you beef up this building code we got a little bit. You know, we all live on an acre piece of property or greater. That tank could be a lot farther than five feet away from the fence line, and everybody would be happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. David Kozinski, followed by Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Debbie Green, followed by Jill Aronofsky.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Good evening, council. Just had a report over the weekend of coyotes running around Lou Ray Road. And one of my neighbors let me know that he found his peacocks all killed and his chickens all killed. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but it's something that's a concern of my neighbors. Also, secondly, keep Mr. Parker in your thoughts. He's got surgery coming up in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Again, I'd like to talk to you about the drainage project out west, which is the townwide plan for drainage, which we do not have. And I mentioned to you before that we're not allowed to charge a new homeowner for part of their drainage plan that would be theirs unless we have a plan in effect. Well, it should be a no-brainer after 15 years of beating it around at drainage and infrastructure because we have three former chairman on the board. So you already know what needs to be done. You already know the costs. And if you want to do it for a couple of years, that's fine. But let's get it done finally after 15 years of kicking it down the road. So we can go ahead, and if there's a project that has to be done and there's a landowner that's building something, then we can get their money for it instead of having to take it out of my pocket and your pocket. Okay? So let's get it done. Thank you.
You, Debbie, and then Jill.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th Avenue. I just wanted to-
Can't hear you in the mic. I don't know why.
I just wanted to address y'all because it was really disappointing last week with the agenda item for discussion, the agenda item with the country estates park and the repairing of the fence. When you look at all the parks in the town, whether it's Rolling Oaks or the Equestrian Park or in the parks now that I'm on the Parks Board and visiting the different parks, even the passive parks, when you arrive to them, they're inviting. And this park, first off, from security reasons, when the Parks Board started looking at this park because that fence needed to be repaired. It had holes in it and it needs to be repaired. And it's right on Griffin Road. And that park is, it's a nice little park, but it's a very well-attended, nice little park. So when it first came about, it was brought to from staff, and I don't know whether it was from council, that it should have a fence similar to the other parks in town. Well, then we discussed it, and really, that didn't meet the safety needs because that park is right on Griffin Road. So open fence, it really wasn't going to work. So the discussion came to chain link fence, using the existing posts that were there, but make it green so it was more inviting. And it doesn't, I don't know how many have actually gone by, but there's still holes in the, I mean, there are holes that have been patched over. It kind of looks like what it looked like when you passed by the women's prison. It's just not inviting like the other parks in town. So I just think we need to put some efforts out west. And then the other is, which is the horse crossings. I, you know, it was some of the tragic events that happened out west. Out west, where you see horses riding almost on a daily basis. Very rarely do I ever see horses on Griffin Road further out east. But yet, we have those horse crossings are up out east. And there's still nothing out west. So I just want you all to put some attention out west. I think pretty much most of your population is out west. So I just, it feels like it's just kind of being ignored somewhat. So, and just with that park, that it got put off for two meetings, that something couldn't be done. And it's not like it's just been, as was said, it's been out there for a year. Well, it's not that it was just out there for a year and just sat. It's, we were trying to get something done, and we thought there was consensus based on whether it was council people who regularly attend the meeting and the Parks Board. And then it just kind of just floored me at the last meeting because I never, ever expected that discussion that went on. Thanks.
Thank you. Final speaker, Jill Aronofsky.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, council, Keith. I'd like to say that I'm very happy to see that Griffin Road is going to be widened with a bicycle path. It's very dangerous where we are, around 188th Avenue narrowing down like that. There's cars racing us, and we have to get all the way over to the left-hand side of the road to make a turn onto our street. And bicyclists need to be safe, and anybody walking and/or the horse riders need to have safety also.
Thanks, Jill. That item is actually on the agenda at number eight. So as long as you don't mind, we'll incorporate what you just said into that agenda item. All right, no more public comment, Mayor. All right. Board reports. Any board reports?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Just a quick update that Keith and I and Katie Edwards and Jeff Cadums had a great conversation since the last time we got together. And I think we have, Katie now feels very comfortable, I believe, that she understands what the intention of the board was. And I was very pleased in the conversation because I believe that she's going to be able to work it into the wording. And so it was a very encouraging conversation. It was a good exchange. I think she has a good feel for what it is we're looking for. We just need, she's nine months pregnant. We just need a couple more days of, before the big event. So, but I think we're in good shape. So I just want to report that. I don't know exactly when we'll be bringing it back to you, but I think it's fairly soon. Thank you.
And Mayor, just to expand upon that. We hope that, I think she committed to getting the committee and committee chair a draft by Tuesday. And if she does, what we're going to do is we're going to advertise that, post it in accordance with the new regulations that Emily was telling me about. And then it could be discussed at the Thursday comp plan meeting to at least start that process. So that is the goal right now.
Okay. Any additional board reports? Seeing none, back to us. Councilmember comments? Who'd like to go first?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Gear.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, as usual, for coming. I know, you know, this can be somewhat entertaining. Hopefully, we won't disappoint you tonight. Just a couple of things of note. It seems how I've been appointed as town crier by Andy. So everywhere I go, I see this label. So just thought I'd let that go.
We all voted on it.
Yeah. Sure you did. Missed one meeting, and that's it. Okay, anyway.
Works for us.
All kidding aside, it's an honor to be up here. Just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is hazmat at the barn, shredding, drug prescription, prescription drug, however you want to say it, drop-off, batteries, tires, fluorescent bulbs. All go, get accepted. Old TVs, things of that nature. It's a way to properly dispose paint, big time. And by the way, just so everybody knows this, the paint that you drop off, even if, you know, oddball color is a little bit left, that all gets recycled in Broward County, believe it or not. That paint gets redone and remixed, and it comes in like four shades. And I forget, everybody, every resident in Broward County is entitled to eight gallons a year or something like that. I forgot what it was, but just wanted to mention that. The other thing is, we have a photo contest going on for the Rural Arts Committee. We need to have all the photos in by the 15th of August. Get them into Susan here at Town Hall. There's some on display right now in the lobby. They look really nice, and I appreciate everybody. Everybody who has an interest in photography in our town to participate. We've got bingo at the barn on the 24th. Write it on your calendar. I believe it's at 6:00 PM. Dinner's included. It's $20 tickets. And I believe they're available at Town Hall. And I'm from the Parks Foundation members. Next meeting, we have our, as a reminder, we have our budget millage and trim meeting where we're going to set the maximum rate on our budget. I think, I urge everybody to attend, or if you can't make it, at least listen in and watch so we know, you know what's going on. This is a mandatory meeting where we have to set our maximum millage for our next budget season. Just want to make mention on the, briefly to a couple of comments made by the speakers. The coyote problem is all over the ranches. We have them on my street where I'm at. The duck population is going down. That seems to be one of their main courses. And the wildlife people, we're allowed to, if you have it on your property, you're allowed to use whatever means necessary. I won't get into the details. I'm sure you can fill in the blank on that. Another note, the other day, I saw a, it looked like, I didn't get a license plate. It was, I was in a hurry. Somebody unloading Muscovy ducks on my street. Apparently that they were caught from somewhere else. And so, you know, we're a really big drop-off point, apparently, for pet, unwanted pets, cats, dogs, things of that nature. So I just want to make mention it. I didn't have a chance to get a license plate or anything like that. So, but just be on the lookout for something like that. And the other thing I'd like to address is, one of the speakers mentioned about being out west ignored. I believe we're, I don't believe that. I believe we do focus on being out west. I know, Mayor, you're going to address the fence situation, so I don't want to get into that too far at this point. But I know, I live out west, and I do everything I can to, you know, try to make the residents as comfortable and safe as possible. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. That's always, always on our radar. I know it's on everybody else's radar, but it's particularly on mine. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go later.
Bob, go right ahead.
No, I'll go.
Oh, you want to go later?
Yes.
Dee?
Well, mine's going to be short and brief. And it's not about the town. It's about me. I was an experiment, and a successful one. I just got my results back. Thank you, Jill, for all your concerns. And it, the CAT scans came back, and they're really, really nice. The doctors are so pleased. It will be recorded, from my understanding, at the end of this year. It will be in all the medical journals. And they had to get permission and for, you know, photos and everything. And if this helps one person, then I feel I've done something really great. But it did help me, so I am the one. And hopefully, my next checkup will be cancer-free. They're still experimenting with this drug. I didn't even think I could get this because the treatments are just astronomical. But through wisdom and determination to find out and resources, I want to thank Keith for all your help and hard work in finding this. And I'm extremely grateful for my kids, for my grandkids, and for all of you sitting here to be here for you. And I thank you. And I just hope that I never let anybody really down. And it's opened my eyes to so many things, and I'm truly, truly grateful. Thank you.
Freddie?
Go ahead. Follow that one, Bob.
Anything, Freddie?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Bob?
Just real quick. I do have a follow-up. I want to congratulate my wife. She had her checkups yesterday. Six years cancer-free.
Yeah.
So we were in a different place than you were, but man, every year that it's another good checkup, it's another year of a great life together. I did want to talk about the fence, so I want to hear what Doug has to say about it. I gave it a lot of thought, and I actually made a trip out there last Sunday to check out the condition of the fence. I drive past it every day. I didn't even, I knew it had holes, but I didn't know how bad some of them were until you guys brought it up last time. I mean, after a while, it just becomes part of the scenery. So I don't have too much to say. I just did want to bring up one other thing that I, I hope you feel like I'm harping on it, particularly all you out there in TV land. You know, Davy provides us the crime statistics and the crime reports on our town. We get them from Andy every week. And I don't know how many, I guess I'll just keep saying it until this problem goes away. In this day and age, people still leave their houses in cars unlocked. And we've got, I don't know if it's the same group of kids because Davy's done a great job of arresting a bunch of them over the last couple of months, but they're still hitting our cars. It's probably just more opportunists coming up. Same thing with the houses. Lock your car. These guys are, they're looking for an easy score. They're looking for something where they can walk up and pilfer the car. And if there's anything good in there, great. They just made out. They're going to the pawn shops in Opelika and Hialeah. And they're on to the next house or car, whatever opportunity they see. Garage doors open, all that sort of thing. All of this stuff is preventable. I mean, if you got these reports, you'd be shocked. It's the same things and numbers every single report. It's basically people coming here because they know we live in a nice town and that there's people that still don't lock their cars. Some cars get stolen because people leave their keys in them. I'm probably giving these guys a great advertisement if they watch our video. But I don't know how to say, I don't know how to write about it anymore. Lock your car, lock your door, lock your home, close your garage door. And you're knocking down your probability of getting hit by these criminals dramatically. So you'll hear it again. And I apologize to the folks here that take the advice and/or grew up with the rules of lock your car, lock your doors. But it's a big problem in our town, and it shocks me that it still goes on in this day and age. Anyway, congratulations again, Dee. Thank you, Doug.
Gladly. So a couple of things. The fence issue. We, do we have a price of what that material cost us, Andy, yet? Or do we know? Marty, do you have any idea what the material we purchased for the McBride fence thing that we were going to be doing?
I don't recall. I can get you the invoice if you would.
Okay, anyhow.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The material itself, I believe, was about $3,500.
I thought that was installed. I thought that was the installed price.
Yeah, one of the questions was that gauging on it also.
Because I didn't sign that check.
One of the questions was the gauging on that. Is that with the coating, without the coating?
No, it's without. It's just galvanized.
Because it's not so much little ones running out or a dog running out. It's someone going down Griffin Road and going through the fence. They're going to take something out.
Anyway, so what the position we're in is that we ordered this fencing, and we were getting ready to get it installed. And I guess ultimately, we set it with the McBrides. So we didn't pay to have the fencing installed, but we own the fencing and the posts and whatnot. So the material is actually here in back of Town Hall right now as we, as I speak.
Locked up, right?
No, not locked up. But we don't have any lockups here. So we purchased 300 feet, linear feet of fence, of new fencing. And I don't know how many posts it is. But the thought process was, I spoke to some other residents who have equipment and tools and whatnot, and went out there and looked at this. Andy and I went out there and looked at it also. I've been out there at least three or four times and looked at it since the last meeting. So the, we're confident that we can remove the chain link, the barbed wire off the top of the fencing, cut it, roll it up, put it in a pile inside the park for the waste protocol, pick it up. After doing that, we were going to measure the distance from the corner of 190th and Griffin and see how far 300 feet gets us. And to eliminate the two gates that are there on the front of Griffin Road and install whatever posts we need and replace whatever ones that are broken or bad or need replacement. So the thought process is to cut the fencing to where the distance it'll get us, lay the fence down, roll it up, and then with equipment, carry it, you know, to, into the park to get picked up. Replace the posts that we need to replace in cement. And put up the new fencing. And move forward with that process. So I've got some volunteers. We can use some more. I mean, you live out there, Steve lives out there. I don't know who else can step up, maybe help or, and schedule a time to go do this. But literally, we can do it with volunteers. The only additional cost we will have, since we have the fencing and whatnot now, is the bulk pickup. So any additional holes, we'll patch, you know, we'll save a section or whatever and patch those sections where we need to. But I would tell you, we can save a lot of money, get a good result. The barbed wire's gone. And I would say after that job's done, then we'll schedule cutting the barbed wire off the 190th section, which goes down to the new gate that's there. So I'd like to, anybody who wants to input or ask in or whatever, feel free.
No, we have to agree with Debbie. It's very nasty looking. It looks vicious, and it does look like a women's prison fence. And, you know, it does have to be secure. I am the one that came up with the nice white PVC, and it was brought to my attention by my husband. He said, "And that's going to keep a kid in how?" So, but I thought aesthetically, it would look pretty and nice and not thinking about the safety. But to have somebody run off a Griffin Road, you have to have heavy gauge. You know, your poles can't be too far apart or you're not going to get the support. So that all has to be factored in.
So that would be eliminating the two front gates and making that fence one piece across the front. We have the twist tie stuff. We have-
I don't know how, what is this fence? Six feet?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'd have to add some more six foot on to that. Are we going to paint it? I don't think anybody really wants, we're replacing galvanized with galvanized, right?
Correct. Except it's new and shiny.
Shiny? Galvanized isn't shiny.
Well, I mean, it's-
It's new.
It's new. It looks, it looks new. It's not weathered in any way.
I'm all for saving money, but aesthetics are important, too. Maybe we can roll it or do something to paint it.
Painting, to me, is maintenance, but-
Something to think about.
So.
So why don't you come back with what this is going to cost? Because it sounds like-
I just told you. Whatever, we already own the material. We've already bought it. It's out back.
Hold on. You said we have 300 feet out back?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying more, so we don't know.
That's about only half, though, of that fence.
No, no, no. Listen, that's what's been purchased. We have 300 feet that we've purchased that we were going to use at the McBride site.
But we need about 600 is what you're saying.
Well, I wasn't saying 600. I was going to use what we bought to replace what we have and fix what we need.
So we're only going to replace part of it, is what you're saying?
Yes.
On the front?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe we can get a good price on that used fence, stuff we have out back. I mean, I like the idea of volunteers, Doug, but this is, I don't want to use the word I use at home, but this is a half-something job, in my mind, if we're not replacing it all. It'll look different.
Okay. So I think most of the money in the fencing stuff, excuse me. I think most of the money in the fencing issue is the removal of the barbed wire on the top.
Maybe we can prep it for somebody to come in and install the right stuff. Or maybe we can install the right stuff. But I look at it now every day.
Am I getting it?
On my radar again.
Well, I think the budget was $10,600.
That's why I said, give the whole price.
So I think we, the budget was $10,600. That fence doesn't need that much. But because we own the fence, I'd replace the 300 feet that we bought or maybe a little shy of that if we need it in a different section to repair some other tear or rip that's in it. Okay? But I don't see the need to replace the entire fence, personally. So if you guys don't want to save money and use volunteers to do this project, I'm okay with that, too. But I would tell you, I think it's more important to save the town a bunch of money and the neighbors get involved and pitch in and help get it done.
All the above. I agree with that.
Okay.
However, I don't want two different fences up. It should have looked good. I mean, we should be proud of what we're going to have at the end, not old fence and new fence to try to save money.
Well-
Volunteers can take down the fence. We could probably save a lot of money, Doug.
I would say this to you, then, in that scenario. I would say, let's do what we can. Let's look at it when it's done. If we're happy or don't like it or want to do the rest of it, we buy some more fencing and the volunteers get out and complete the job.
So we're going into this without knowing what our costs would be.
You're still going to have-
I would tell you, double the cost of what we just bought as a starting point because we had 300 feet of fence, and we were talking 600 previously. So I don't know that you need to replace all those posts, but I think with the posts that we already have, that we only need the fencing and the twist tie because we have enough poles, I believe, to replace anything that we need along there. So I would tell you, another 300 feet of fence would be exactly where you were previously with the bid. And we can do it with volunteers. So whatever that cost is related to hauling away the old stuff and buying the new stuff and volunteers, there's no cost.
Yeah, I would be all in favor of the volunteers doing it. I'll be out there pitching in. If you do want to paint it, I got a sprayer. I mean, that might not be the best way to paint a fence. But I don't want to see two different fences when I drive past. I think that would look, it wouldn't look good. So, but again, let's figure out what the costs are. You're saying it's not going to cost us anything, but, and I agree. Let's use the fence posts that are out there. Let's eliminate the fence, the gates that are there. I think that's a good idea. But I don't wanna see new fence, old fence. I'd rather just see the fence replaced.
What is the cost you're looking for? Because...
I have no idea.
Marty, can you have somebody dig up that invoice or no? Because, worst case scenario, if you double what we have, which we don't need...
It was thirty-two hundred Mayor, three thousand two.
No, no. That's the check that I did not sign the other day for the install. The thirty-two hundred dollars was a check that you put in front of me to sign that we did not install that fence and I did not sign that check and I sent it back. I said, "We're only purchasing material. We're not paying for an install that didn't happen."
We did owe a day's labor on that because the installers were out there all day.
Okay, well, whatever it is, it wasn't the thirty-two hundred dollars that was put in front of me. So, I don't know what that immediate cost is on the fencing, but I don't... I wouldn't think it's fifteen hundred dollars personally.
Let me jump in if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I think if we're gonna do the fence project and we're gonna use volunteers, we should do the whole fence. I mean, I've looked at the fence. I drive by it two, three times a week and I pay attention to it. It's got trees growing in it. It's got other stuff. It's in rough shape and we all know that. I mean, that's not a... You know, if we've got fifty, if it's six hundred feet and we've got fifty percent of it already paid for, well, let's get the other three hundred feet and do the whole thing correctly. You know, so that we don't have a shiny and a not shiny, or a weathered and a not weathered. I disagree with painting it. If you, just the wind action alone's gonna rub the paint off. Wherever it's gonna go, it's gonna be a maintenance nightmare. I think that's wasted effort, to be honest. If you're gonna do vinyl clad, that's one thing, but we already have.
Right.
You know, and we are talking the front of the park. That's the visual part. We are talking safety with kids. You know, if everybody's comfortable with volunteers doing it, that's, you know, one thing. Keith, our liability is no different if we have volunteers versus a contractor.
We have a form they signed.
Yeah, they signed a form.
Okay, alright. So, you know, all things being equal, I'd rather see the whole fence being done as opposed to piecemeal. And using what we have. Let's use what we have. It's already paid for. You know, we had it in the budget at ten thousand and change. We've, you know, we've hemmed and hawed back and forth with this fence for two years. Actually, longer than that because it starts in the budget process, six months before. This was from oh seventeen, where it got started and, you know, picked up legs and kept going. And it went from PVC to posts to, you know, whatever. And, you know, one of the big costs was the removal of the old fence. The demo costs are quite large, putting in new posts and all that. So, I think we're gonna do it. We're gonna need to do it right. You know, we do it correctly and using the materials we have.
I don't object in any way of replacing the entire six hundred feet and just do it all with volunteers. I save a fortune and I think it'll be a great neighborhood project and people coming out. Like I said, the only additional cost, other than buying the additional three hundred feet that I know of, is the bulk pickup of the old material.
I like the idea of the green and the black, but it sounds like that ship sailed since we're using something off another job. So, I mean, I can certainly live without the color, although I'll probably hear from a few members of the audience that we want color. But, you know, I agree. We don't need more maintenance costs, that's for sure.
I have one other question. Would you all mind if we let a couple of people come up and have some input?
Absolutely, let them.
Alright, come on up. It is councilmember, I wanted to ask everybody.
I have no objection to the volunteers. My question is this. You have brand-new material out there and it's not coated. It's just...
It's not galvanized? It's galvanized though, right?
Right. It's not coated.
Not coated.
If it's still wrapped, I know when I've done this kind of stuff and I've done big fencing, you can take a roll back and get a roll. It might cost you more to get the upgrade. But as long as you haven't broken into that roll, you should be able to exchange it for what you want. And the same goes for your posts. So, what I would suggest is if they want black or green, whichever one you decide, is take the material, call the one that it was purchased from, make the swap, and pay the difference. It's not that much. And I agree that you need to do the whole thing in one step. And if you get the volunteers out there, you take it down and then you put the new posts in, and then you pull your wire, get rid of the gates and all that stuff, you have a nice, beautiful, new fence. If you're gonna do piecemeal and it's gonna look like somebody's patchwork and I think that will make people even more angry at the effort of the town. It's like a stepchild. You've put a lot of money into other people's fences at other parks and put money into them. So, you owe that to those people out west. That their fence, which is not gonna look ranchy, be at least new and presentable and have some class to it. But, try trading what you have in and get six hundred feet of what you need. Thank you.
New Holland's worth one hundred ninety-ninth Avenue. There's a couple of things that seems that this was not thought out before it was brought to the council. I think Broward County requires a top rail. You have the top rails. Do you?
It has one.
It has a top rail out back.
Well, there's pieces of it, yes. But there's top rail there.
So, we purchased top rail to go with the new fence.
To go with the new fence.
As far as I know. There's rails out there. I didn't count what was what, but there's posts and there's some rails and there's fencing.
Okay, okay. The other thing is that when you put the posts in, you gotta wait twenty-four hours before you pull the fence.
Correct.
So, one day you're gonna put the posts in, the next day is when you can pull the fence. And you gotta put a tension on it, which means you're going to need a small tractor or a car with...
There's gonna be heavy equipment out there.
Hold on, I'm just telling you. And if you're gonna do three hundred, I think it's longer than three hundred feet, the front. So, you wanna wrap it around at least to our entrance gate at that point. If you're only gonna do it piecemeal. You don't wanna have it stop thirty feet from the end of Griffin Road and have it up again. That looks not ranches, but raunchy, as the correction for a previous speaker. So, what I'm saying is you haven't thought this out completely. Now, Gay had a good idea. And I do know that if you get the wrong and you want a coated fence, which would look a lot better and look like it belongs in a park, you can take it back and for a premium, change it. So, we need to look at that, to see if we could change it. And also, the entire thing, I think it's more than six hundred, I guarantee it's more than six hundred feet from the end, the south end of the park, to the front and over to South Broward Drainage District area. Thank you.
I pretty much agree with everything they said. Although you use a come-along and a stretching device, which has got a couple of little arms on it to grab a hold of the fence, so you pull it uniformly. You don't try to use a tractor. It's not adjustable enough. I mean, maybe it would work, but maybe it wouldn't with volunteers. So, but the other thing is, nobody's ever called out a gauge. Nobody's ever been sure on the finish. As far as the finish go, we have a polyurethane, a single-stage polyurethane paint, which is being used on dot projects now. And it's good for ten years. So, I don't know how long these other colors are designed to last, but this is direct-to-metal. The only thing you'd have to do is just make sure there's no oil on the fence and the paint would stick. Anyway, that's my idea. If you let me know what the material is you want, there's some fence guys, I mean, big wholesalers, right around where my office is down in Doral. Thank you.
I just wanted to say I appreciate you all thinking about this, that it hasn't like just go away after the last meeting and the efforts you put into fixing the fence and, you know, doing something to repair it. But I do, I think Gay's idea was an awesome idea. And being, you know, if it is still rolled and new, just exchange it for that green vinyl fence. And just to remind you on the advisory board, that's what they recommended, was the green vinyl fence. Just so that it's inviting and welcoming and looks, you know, when people pass by, this is Southwest Ranches and that's the impression you wanna have. And the other is just on the advisory board. This was, which I think Gary mentioned now, it was budgeted for. It wasn't done. And this park was, when we prioritized what parks to address in this year, this park was the top priority. And then it went on to the one on like one ninety-third and on from there, where we needed to get some stuff done, but just to share that with y'all. Thanks.
Good evening, George Morris. With respect to your comment, Mayor, with regards to the disposal of the fence, that would be very easy to get rid of with scrap metal. I do know several vendors that would take it for free. There wouldn't be a need to pay to get it rid of.
Great news. Great news.
I could also oversee that as well and I also would be interested in volunteering to work on that project.
Appreciate it. Thank you, George.
And I would definitely like to see the green vinyl coated fence would be a great improvement for the park, I think. Would be awesome. And as well as my experience in the industry, you can exchange that fence for something else as long, you're not gonna get your money back. But you certainly could be able to exchange it, if not, worst-case scenario, sell it on eBay or whatever. Or local contractors or whatever would wanna use that. But that's at a minimum of twenty percent restocking fee, but you should be able to exchange that. Anyhow, thank you.
We have a perimeter on the south side that really is in rough shape. So, I would suggest just rolling this existing stuff up and repositioning it out on the south property line there. Rather than just throw it away because it does have a value. And in fact, if you do decide to get rid of it, you just cut it into segments and roll it up and put it on Craigslist. It'll be gone in the morning. Everybody comes and gets it. Anytime I've put chain link out for bulk, it's been gone right away. So, people use it for, you know, animal pens and it's a commodity. It goes away. We don't have to send it to the dump. And I'll help out. You guys give me the dates you wanna work. You can come and get the new Holland if I'm not home. And I've got some of those tools for stretching the wire.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
My name's Louis Rebeloso. I live on one hundred eighty-sixth. These are my three boys here. They're from the Boy Scouts. They had to come in and be part of this, see what's going on. But, interesting, everything I've heard about the green, and I live real, you know, close to there, about the green fence, I haven't heard anybody say, "We prefer the galvanized." This is quite a nice community and so I don't think you can get worse than the galvanized, right? So, that'd probably be the lowest of, you know, the bar. And so, I think it's not, I think it was a great idea. This lady came up with the idea of exchanging the fence and having something kinda nice. Because I don't think we expect to just keep it for a couple of years, right? It's something that we're gonna present, and it's presenting right on Griffin. So, everybody who drives by Southwest Ranches is seeing this is Southwest Ranches and this is the way they present themselves. So, I haven't heard anybody say they prefer galvanized. So, that's it. Thank you.
Steve Riker's, fifty-one twenty, Southwest one ninety-fifth terrace. Yeah, no, I appreciate the conversation, Mayor. I appreciate your efforts to save the money. I think that's good.
And the volunteer project. Big deal.
And the volunteer, absolutely. And I'll be happy to join in and help out. I think it's a great, great opportunity for the neighbors to come together. If we're gonna do it though, I do think we should do it right. I think the green covered is the way to go. This is the front of our, this is the front of our community. So, to just have a bare galvanized there is not, certainly wasn't what I had envisioned. The other thing is the entrance into the park itself, obviously, is not on Griffin Road. It's on one ninetyth. And whatever we do, needs to include that section of the fencing as well. You know, I look at the Equestrian Park and one of the greatest things about that park is the entranceway, you know? You are impressed from the moment you go into that park because of the entranceway that's in there. And so, and I don't even know what we paid for that. I know it wasn't, there was some adventure around that. But, I do think that this is our opportunity to do it right. And I appreciate the discussion up there and we need to do it right. Let's do the, let's do it in a way that looks good for the community and we'll be proud of. Thank you.
Alright, public session is closed. Back to us. I guess my only concern on swapping it out is, I think they make the vinyl coated post also. Am I right on that? So, we need to change all the posts? The posts are painted? Alright, so, we could get away with...
They're looking better.
Yeah, but that's probably baked-on enamel, you know, that's, yeah, it's not...
So, my question to my colleagues up here would be, if we're going with a different material, first of all, obviously, it's more expensive, but it is what it is. I don't know, I'll take that fencing back, but as John mentioned, maybe there's other sections that it can be used or needed. But, I would say, I guess we need to get some pricing so we know what we're dealing with as far as material and measure it out. Because if we don't have a cost in the install and it's volunteers, obviously, we're gonna need some cement for posts and whatnot for whatever we're replacing. But, so, listen, I look forward, as a volunteer project, save the town money and get everybody involved, I think this is a great idea. So, whatever you all wanna do as far as what color, whatever, whatever you all wanna choose. If they pick, I personally think black would look better, but they want green.
Yeah, they made the recommendation of green, so...
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, wait, wait.
Gary.
Yeah. You know, we're kinda going full circle here. You know, I think we've all come to terms with the fact that we want the front to look nice and the vinyl clad is really what we need to run with because you don't have to deal with it for like twenty, thirty years, you know? We have a, we have a price already in the budget and that's for total removal. Obviously, that's out the window if we're using volunteers because that was done by somebody that's what they do, you know? So, Mary Gay's suggestion on flipping the, possibly getting a credit on the existing galvanized towards the vinyl, that's something that Andy was obviously gonna have to work on and get back to us. That's not, you know, we're all saying it can be done. Well, you know, let's find out if we can, if it can be done. But there's another consideration too, and that is the area going down one ninetyth. That's in rough shape also. So, if there's too much going on with, you know, like we're gonna get ten cents on the dollar for the galvanized, I say, "Hold on to it and, you know, replace that section of it," went down one ninetyth. And I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, one ninetyth though is, I don't know what the height, but it's not six feet.
Okay.
I think it's five-foot fence.
Alright, but I'm just saying, we've got the product, you know? And if it's something where we're, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to do that, you know, it's a possibility. Or like John said, the backside of the park, may be a possibility. But I think it's like six hundred and thirty-four linear feet or six hundred and fifty, something like that. I remember the backup material from last meeting. So, like I said, we're kinda going full circle here. I think, I don't know if this is consensus, but I would rather see vinyl clad. I was all for it last meeting. I was okay with everything, you know, and then it went in a different direction. And I'm not fighting it. It's not a, it's not an issue. I just think we need to make the park look right.
Listen, I gotta tell you, I'm on board with as far as replacing the fencing and whatever. We stay within the budget of the money we have and we're doing it with volunteers and we're saving money. I don't care how much fence we do.
We'll get more.
So, but we'll get a lot more bang for the buck in the neighborhood and everybody's involved and it's an activity and, you know, I think it'll be a good project. So, what do we wanna direct Andy to get some pricing on the green vinyl six-foot fencing? And I guess gauge is important. I don't know if the vinyl comes in what, different gauges, but obviously, we'll want the heaviest gauge we can get.
Mayor, what we'll do is go back to what was originally spec two weeks ago that was before you.
Okay.
Use that pricing is what you're saying.
Yeah, use that pricing as a benchmark.
I don't know if it's broke down, is that proposal broke down with labor and materials?
It may not be now, but it will be.
No, I didn't, there was a check that I did not sign.
But that's what I'm saying. That check was for the labor is what you said.
It was for, I believe it was for both labor and the fence.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thirty-two hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Why are we arguing about this? That's cheap. That's cheap.
Yeah, well, that was only 300 feet and was brand new, not, not, not repairing old and taking out and, and no bubble, yeah.
We got some homework to do.
Yeah, okay.
So that, so that's why, how that even came about like that.
Yeah, if, if I remember correctly, I did some quick calculations last night. It was like six, I think it was like $16 a linear foot on the lowest bid that we had for the park. It was somewhere right in that ballpark. That was removal and replacement with the vinyl clad.
Means far as the labor.
Labor and materials.
Okay.
The whole thing, I, I was curious what it was.
Right.
Per linear foot, and it was right around 16, $16.
And we got the gauging off of that? Do we know what it was?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine gauge. And the other thing is the, the quotes we got were for five foot fence, if I recall from our last discussion. And this is six foot fence out here and it's existing six foot fence.
Yes.
So, yeah, we need the homework done. I mean, we're doing off the cuff numbers.
So, but, but we're all on board with doing it with volunteers, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so Andy, get a price, see where we are and, uh, let's get this project moving.
I think, I, I'd like to, volunteers and the vinyl fencing.
Yeah, yeah, agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Green vinyl fencing, not black.
Uh, you know. Debbie's favorite color.
Okay, thank you.
They did? They selected black? Okay, I'm good with that. I, I personally like black.
As long as it's vinyl coated, I, I, you know.
Yeah.
And not yellow.
Yeah.
They usually have green in parks though, usually.
Okay.
That's a pretty standard, so maybe there's a difference in price too.
So, well, there is, but because we're doing it with, uh, volunteers?
No, I mean, I'm saying difference in colors too.
So, all right, well, Andy will get us the information and get it back to us. Um, all right, other than that, I'm good, Dee. I'm thrilled you're, uh, going in the right direction and, uh, elated and may you have a nice, long life yet to live, so. God bless. All right, I'm good. Uh, legal comments?
Yeah, just, uh, quickly, Dee, a hundred percent, uh, share the sentiments. Congratulations on, uh, on an impressive outcome. Uh, for those people, you know, who may be dealing with same issues in TV land, I'll just mention it. Uh, a lot of these drug companies, especially when dealing with chemother, uh, chemopathic drugs, um, are getting grants from the federal government to give those drugs. And a lot of times the grants have requirements in them that they provide drugs at lower costs or even at cost to those who need it. And so anyone going through this and, and might not have the financial resources to pay the top dollar for the chemopathic drugs, to definitely research the drug and find out if they're required to have patient assistance. And you'll find a lot of times they do. And I was fortunate to research these and to find that out as well. So glad it, uh, it came to a, a successful, um, conclusion. Um, only other thing that I, I know that Andy's mentioning to the council in your one-on-ones, and it's something to bring up publicly as well. One of the largest complaints code enforcement's getting is dealing with noise complaints. And that is because our code only addresses noise after 11:00 PM. So what we're finding now is more and more loud noises blasting radios, uh, parties during the, the daytime hours. And, um, so as a result of that, um, code is getting a lot of calls and a lot of calls, uh, animals too, he's saying, but that's, that's a different topic. But, um, uh, code's getting a lot of calls and, and police are getting calls during the day. And the town of Southwest Ranches doesn't have a decibel reading or, or any of those issues when people are complaining that it's a Sunday and their neighbor is blasting loud music at, uh, 10:00 AM. So maybe in the future, it's something for you all to consider. Um, so, uh, we're bringing it up because all of a sudden we're starting to get a lot more hits, uh, and, and are unfortunately telling residents or vice versa that there's nothing we can really do because our code is after 11:00 PM as relates to that, uh, issue. The other one that Robert brought up, but I, I, uh, spoke to Andy and I don't think it, uh, is an issue that has traction with council, but, uh, he brought it up, so I might as well say it. And that is, um, our code requires, uh, barn animals, farm animals to be 50 feet from the property line. But it does not require other animals to be 50 feet from the property line. So we're having, uh, complaints, um, a few now on, on other animals and that are directly on the property line that aren't considered barn animals, uh, such as, uh, parrots, such as dogs, such as, you know, the gamut of animals. And residents are complaining that the noise of these other animals are, uh, incessant and, uh, but our code doesn't regulate it. So, uh, in case anyone mentions it to you, that is not within our code now. Uh, and it's something that the council can always.
Do we need a workshop?
Uh, you don't need a workshop, I just mentioned it now. If the council wants to talk about it, they, they can at, at any time. Uh, final, uh, issue, we had a very productive meeting. I appreciate Steve bringing that up. Um, you know, uh, the delay was actually a little bit fortunate. And that is because there was a major, uh, lawsuit and Supreme Court decision, uh, involving the city of Wellington. So their loss is our gain. And as a result of that, we can even more closely tailor, uh, the nursery language, um, uh, to what the court will uphold based upon that recent, uh, ruling in the city of Wellington. I know the Complan Board has worked exceptionally hard, uh, in bringing this, uh, forward to the council. So, uh, we hope that the work product will be well received, uh, when it gets to the council as well. Other than that, no further comments.
Okay, Andy, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to finish up what Keith had said, uh, a, as you all know, uh, I did discuss both of those code-related items with all of you during our agenda briefings this week. And we are gonna be taking a look at the noise ordinance. That has really been a frequent complaint and it's, and it's been all around the town. So we're gonna take a look at that to see what teeth we have with the noise, but the bass also that sometimes accompanies some of that music. That the music is not always as loud, but that, that bass and rumbling can create, create issues as well. So we're gonna take some looks at that and, uh, see what, what can be done, what can't be done. And, and obviously we'll report back to, uh, you know, the council for any changes that you, that you may wanna implement on that. Other than that, Mayor, I have a, I actually have a few things tonight and I have a whole lot of good news to share with you. Uh, the first is Sandy Luongo, with the help of Susan Cuts, has established a planning committee for the, uh, the town's 20th birthday for next year. They've reached out to some of the HOAs, some residents and, and have had some brainstorming sessions. I do have a list of some of the i, uh, the items that they have come up with and I'm gonna share that with you all this evening. But I will let you know that Councilmember Schroeder has graciously volunteered to serve as the council liaison to that committee. And, uh, as we have liaisons for all the other advisory boards and, and we'll certainly go forward with that. And, uh, obviously they're, they're doing some brainstorming, but that'll come back to the council for what you ultimately elect to fund or what kind of party you wanna see. So that information will come back to you all. So that's the first one.
Good.
Uh, second, as, as I think you all know, we've been going through, uh, our community rating system, audit and review, uh, to better improve on our residents' flood insurance, uh, ratings and, and costs. Uh, Rodley and Emily Acetti have, uh, worked tirelessly over a period of months because that, that rating system is based on points and trying to find opportunities for us to score points. Uh, the rating system goes from one to 10, the lower the number, the better your score is. The, the lowest number that exists in Broward County at the present time, there's one municipality that is a six. Our surrounding municipalities are, are sevens, but they've all been working at this for a longer period of time and had greater resources that they have thrown at it. So we really expected for our first time going through the process that we would come in at, at a nine, maybe an eight, and, and we would continue to work on it over time. Uh, I'm very pleased to share with you tonight that our preliminary rating, we're just waiting for the official notice from FEMA, but our preliminary rating is a seven. So we have. So in one fell swoop, we've caught up to Cooper City, Weston, Pembroke Pines, uh, Davie. Uh, once we get that official rating, our residents, those, those who choose to purchase flood insurance will receive a 15% reduction on the cost of their insurance. So that's the benefit to the residents. As good as that news is, fasten your seatbelt now. I think the Vice Mayor had mentioned earlier that at the next meeting, we'll be setting the preliminary millage rate, fire assessment fee and, uh, solid waste fee. Well, Marty and I have now been here seven years. We have heard from the council, we've heard from residents, we understand what your priorities are. We have met with you all individually and, uh, tomorrow Marty should have the proposed budget ready to go. But I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to sit here tonight and tell you that you will be voting on a reduction in millage rate, a reduction in the solid waste fee and a reduction in the fire assessment. Good job, Marty. So, so that's, that's the, the good news that I wanted to share with you. Last but not least, Mayor, as I just kinda wrap up my report, I just wanna dovetail this into the next three items that we have on the agenda are all MPO related. Uh, the MPO is in the process of updating what had been their 2035 plan with their 2045 plan. These are projects that have been before the council before. You have considered all of these. I do wanna thank Councilmember Schroeder for attending the, uh, the MPO meetings and updating me. Uh, you know, she and I'll sit down and talk and go over those meetings when she comes back. We're working to make sure that the town's interests are, are, are properly represented. And, uh, for us to, at some point in time, obtain funding for these projects, obviously they've gotta be listed here, they've gotta be in, in the, the, uh, the MTP plan. And your approval tonight keeps those things on, in that plan and keeps those, those projects moving forward. So that's just kind of a summary of where we are. If we go through them individually, if you have questions, Mayor, we can certainly answer it. But that's all I have for the report tonight, thank you.
Awesome, appreciate it. One of the.
Go ahead, Keith.
No, I just wanted to mention one thing, uh, that I forgot to mention. I think I'll, I'll mention it every meeting until it goes out. And it's only because you brought up the fire assessment. So I had a, a detailed conversation with, uh, the Broward County Property Appraiser's Office yesterday. Um, after what transpired last year, uh, they decided to go out and they said it would take years to do, but instead they did it all in one year. They went out and they actually inspected every agriculturally, uh, related property in the town of Southwest Ranches. And upon doing so, they made a determination that 119 properties, which was 140 some odd structures, had been misclassified for all these years by their office, okay? So what does that mean? That means that there will be about 119 property owners that are gonna get a surprise in their assessments when they realize that the Broward County Property Appraiser, uh, has reassessed the, what their structure is on their property. But what does that also mean? That means that people that had agricultural structures on their property are now sharing that cost of that fire assessment with 143 other structures, 144 other structures or 119 properties, which means that their assessments go down dramatically. And by way of example, because I looked at one property that we were having issues with the property owner and I can state the name publicly, it's okay, it's called Diamond Eye Stables. Last year they got reassessed by Broward County Property Appraiser and the property appraiser, uh, increased their fire assessment and their fire assessment went up dra, dramatically, uh, something like 13,000 or 14,000 for their structures. As a result of 119, uh, new properties going on that roll, their taxes drop by $7,500. So, uh, I'm letting everyone know this now because there's some people who are gonna be really surprised and other people are gonna be happy. But I, I just wanna mention, this all comes about as a result of the efforts by the property appraiser to try to right, uh, the town and to go out and inspect every single property to ensure that the, uh, structures on the property were properly, uh, classified. So I'm sure everyone's gonna receive calls in this room. Um, and, and so I'm gonna mention this up through the August meeting when those, uh, rolls go out. And Andy is, and I have been working on, and Marty have been working on a letter to those 119 property owners so that they're not, you know, totally shocked when their assessment comes in. But I just wanna disclose that now so that everyone knows.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in with one item I forgot to mention. Uh, and Andy might jump in and join me on this. But, uh, we purchased a while back, has it been three years, Emily? Since we purchased our solar security camera to be mounted wherever we want? So we, we own this camera that we can put anywhere in town, whether we have illegal dumping issues or, or, you know, or theft issues or whatever the case. So we took it out of the box and needed a software update, but I sat in on a, uh, not a class, but a, uh, uh, an update related to this camera. And, um, it's a 12 megapixel, it get, it can get license plates, it can get face recognition, it can do all kinds of stuff. It can see 300 feet in the daytime, I think 100 feet at nighttime. It was about an 80-foot width. But, uh, we're in the process of, uh, pulling it out, dusting it off, getting the software updated and putting it in play where it's needed. So, uh, anyhow, so that's something we've had that we haven't been using and, uh, we're gonna get it in use. So those of you out there, whether it's TV land or otherwise, uh, know of issues within town of, uh, whether it's thefts or illegal dumping or whatever, you might wanna call Town Hall or talk to Andy or somebody and let us know those locations so we can, uh, categorize them to places to catch the people breaking the law and making our town a wreck or a mess.
So we wanna tell everybody, smile, you're on camera.
Yeah, the item, the, the camera has, uh, sound. You can say, uh, um, it has different sayings you can program. Uh, you know, you don't belong here, please leave, or whatever you wanted to say. It's got different things, uh. But, uh, we'll probably more use it covertly and not have that sound item on, uh, so. But, uh, you can set it to take so many pictures in its clip and do video or do pictures and different things. So anyhow, we're, we're gonna dust it off, learn how to work it and, uh, get it out there in the field. So, uh, I just thought I'd share that. All right, um, item number eight.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the addition of the Griffin Road widening bicycle lanes and lighting from Bonaventure Boulevard to US 27 project into the final 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, committing to working with the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, transportation partners and the public to prepare the project for programming in the Broward MPO's Transportation Improvement Program, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary and proper to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this matter?
I got one question, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. What type of lighting are you talking about? I don't wanna see what, uh, Pembroke Pines has or Weston or anything. I, the most I wanna see is what we did on the east side. That's it. And that's the most intense lighting I wanna see. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I didn't see anything in here about lighting. Or is that an assumption? Did I miss it? Okay.
The solar, the solar lighting at intersections.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jim Lasky, 57, Lady Southwest, 180th Avenue. It's about time we're getting to this. You know, uh, this thing started, I tell back when Israel was first getting, uh, elected. Um, there was money available at the MPO, but we had, uh, we had no, uh, none of these ordinances in, in effect. We had to do what we're doing right now to get, uh, anything happening. Well, congratulations. Um, 2013 is when that date was. And, uh, the people from Weston were together with Sheriff Israel in Southwest Ranches and the people from the MPO said we had the money then. And I believe Mr. Fisicali was on the MPO board at that time. But anyway, as far as the lighting goes, if some, if the government is gonna redo that road, you're not gonna tell them what lights to use? Yeah, I don't, I don't see how that's gonna work. So I don't think that should even be an issue. However, they have solar lighting and it's, uh, on the other end of Griffin Road, right next to Hollywood, there's some, uh, lights in there, which we discussed a couple of years ago. That probably would work out just fine. But anyway, I'm glad to see you're getting started on this. We really needed it. A couple of people have already died. I think we really would enhance the area. Thank you.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 19th Avenue. I just, I want to support that you support the widening of Griffin Road from Bonaventure. I just, I want support that you support the widening of Griffin Road from Bonaventure out west. It's one that from, now several years ago, the Country States Homeowner Association passed a resolution in favor of that as well, after, as Noel just said, we had two deaths in probably that many months. It's a shame that it takes this long for the county to do something about it, but appreciate your support of that. Thanks.
Steve Reichries, you know where I live. Exactly. So I just, just wanted to come up and just, once again, appreciate the support for this. This is definitely needed out west. You know, all the attention that we have related to the park out there, which is good. If we look at the street in front of the park, what you see is skid marks all over the place. And that is because of, there is no turn lane, left turn lane there at 190th. So not only does this provide safety for traffic going east and west, it also will provide safety for left-hand turns on a couple of places there where that's still required. So it definitely is needed, and the bike lanes, there's, there's a fair amount of bike riders out there that are hanging on to the edge of that road right now. And so this will be critical for them as well. So definitely support it. The HOA has voted to support it. We appreciate your support of it and look forward to it happening. Thank you.
All right. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Any comments? Bob?
Just one question. I just want to get the record straight, or my memory straight. Because I mean, I, I got to get closer. It's on. I sat where George sat from the time we built this building, and I sat at the back table with Dee over at the Water District for years, and I don't remember money ever being approved to widen Griffin Road. We heard before. Now Freddie, you were on the MPO for a long time before Dee. Was money ever approved to widen Griffin Road out west?
Yes.
It was approved to widen it?
To my knowledge, yes. I'll find out.
Okay. Okay. Because I don't remember hearing that. I mean, if I'm wrong, then correct my memory, please.
Well, with the MPO, you've got to be kind of a squeaky wheel, too, you know? They kind of, not really cower down to the bigger municipalities, but they seem to have a lot more pull. And whether you believe it or not, the MPO, they get a lot of money. A lot of money. So to feel, to fill the needs of the little things that we ask for, because we don't really ask for all that much. I mean, to me, it's just like a no-brainer. But again, I'm not knocking the MPO, but we still don't have a legal voice, which I'm still harping on. You know, you want to take my money, you want to improve your roads, well, I use those roads, and so does everybody in my town. So, you know, you need to hear all of us. Well, that's on a day when not everybody shows up. Well, that's not fair. And that's the way I'm going to keep going at it until one day they say, all right, give her what she wants to shut her up.
You know, Dee, I, I'm so glad you're up there fighting for us, because with this new transportation tax that was passed in November, there's a huge amount of money coming available.
Huge.
And I can hear a giant sucking sound in the south of us, because I went to that meeting with you over at Treetops Park where they were talking about it. Who dominated the conversation without saying names?
Well, I'm going to say a name. After the 2020 census, I can honestly tell you Pembroke Pines is the biggest municipality in Broward County.
Yeah, keep building.
Huge.
Yeah.
And...
Keep fighting for us.
They're on all the projects that are listed throughout the books that I receive. I didn't really bring any with me, but they've got projects going everywhere. I mean, flyovers, crossers, there's a big, there's a big thing going on on Flamingo and Pines Boulevard that, that they're trying to get cross, you know, transportation and different things. It's, it was something that was really intimidating when I, when I started, because I didn't have a lot of knowledge of it. And it's not that I wasn't capable of understanding, and it was just, I had no interest in it at first. So, you know, when you're not interested in something, you don't really kind of care about it. But it is one of the most interesting things that I've sat on or been involved in, and I'm glad I'm there.
Keep fighting for us.
Okay. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the addition of the Weston Road Bridge widening project into the final 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, committing to working with the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, transportation partners, and the public to prepare the project for programming in the Broward MPO's Transportation Improvement Program, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary and proper to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment?
Yeah. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This is the Weston Bridge that we're talking about, widening of it. I would like for, to be added into that widening of the bridge, an equestrian element, same as the C-11 Bridge that is between Bonaventure, I mean, not Bonaventure, between Volunteer and Hancock. That one that they got across going into Davie, they have an equestrian crossing right there built into the bridge. I'd like when they widen the bridge to put that equestrian element in there. Because right now, some horses have been going across there, and the Weston people think it's a wonderful thing to honk at the horses as they're going down the walkway right there. And something's going to happen bad sooner or later. And I'd like to see that equestrian element in there. So if you could put that in the resolution, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Again, there's something else we haven't considered here. This year, $900 million, 50% rural and 50% urban grants were announced or appropriated by the U.S. Transportation Secretary. That's separate from the MPO. So now what you've got to do is getting back to the cost-benefit analysis is maybe put a price on what that improvement's going to do financially for the area. That's how you win these sort of things. After all, the FIU Bridge, as sad as it is, that was a tiger grant fund, too. And they barely got it done in time. And that was appropriated probably five years ago. And they ran and got extensions and everything else, and then it was still a bad situation. So I would suggest you start brushing up on the tiger grant funding and teach, keep each one separately. And then when you go and you start arguing with these municipalities like Pembroke Pines, imagine what the value of their 184th Road would be if, instead of going left or right when you come to Sheridan, you could go straight, too. And the same thing applies to Weston. So you get those three municipalities putting numbers in to this cost-benefit analysis to get the funding to go through here. These improvements, when you do a Griffin Road, the same thing applies. That's the Everglades. How much money are we spending on developing the value of the Everglades and the quality of the recreation that goes on out there? That's really big money. Imagine when a tourist or two spend an extra day or so in South Florida to go bass fishing or to go for an airboat ride. You're going to benefit the Indians, you're going to benefit the people up in Lake Okeechobee, and right out here at Everglades Holiday Park, and everybody that owns a restaurant or a hotel, those are all numbers you plug into these scenarios to get the values up to where you're going to win. Anyway, so much for my time.
David Kazenski, 6411. All, the only concern I really see is we limit the lanes to no more than two, if it's at least possible, and keep horse paths alongside so we can keep the speeders from flying through there. Because if it goes up to a four lane, that's going to be, it's going to be insane. That's it.
It's six lanes now, right? Yeah, you're aware of the intersection we're talking about? Weston Road and Griffin Road? It's, I think, six lanes already.
No, I think it's Bonaventure also.
Am I not reading again? I read all this. Weston Road Bridge widening project. Okay. I'm looking at the right thing.
Okay. All right. Any other, no other public comment? Public comment closed. Back to...
Mayor, on this item, there's been a couple people from the audience who have requested an equestrian component. Your vote tonight is only to have this included in the 2045 plan. When the project moves forward, we would...
Add it.
...draft a resolution in support. We would have a say in the design standards at that time. This is just to get that project included in that list. There's no design at this point. The council would certainly have that opportunity at the appropriate time.
Appreciate the heads up. Thank you. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the addition of the Southwest 184th Avenue project into the final 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, committing to working with the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, transportation partners, and the public to prepare the project for programming in the Broward MPO's Transportation Improvement Program, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary and proper to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Okay, I'll grab the hot potato. Motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment?
All right, David Kazenski, I blew it on the last one. My comments were directed to this budget item, because obviously it's inevitable that there's going to be something going through on 184th. But if there's anything the town can do to keep that into a narrow road, because the people cutting through on a four lane on 184th is going to be killing animals, and it's just going to be devastating to our way of life. Thanks.
The tiger grant system is going to get you more money faster. As soon as you get the money for a tiger grant, how hard do you think it's going to be to step on it with the MPO? They're going to jump on it. So that's the other part.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. A couple of points of information on 184th Avenue. I'd like for you to take a look sometime at the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Element 1.2.D., which means that there can be no entrance from the east on 184th. Transportation Element 1.2.G., it is to be two lanes only. Transportation Element 1.2.H., and West connections are allowed only if it is two-lane. If Broward County builds it four lanes, it'll be a racetrack from Sheridan to Griffin with no entrance from Southwest Ranches east or west at any point. Also, you might want to take a look at the same time, since you're looking at the same document, that Sterling, which will be in four years, you'll be doing, redoing. And the four lane is to disappear in the Comprehensive Plan in Transportation Element 1.2.D. and become a two-lane with a linear park as the other two lanes. Just thought I'd let you know. You've got planning and budget to put together on that. Thank you.
Steve Reichries, President of Country States HOA. I've actually been kind of harping on this for a number of years, but this point really brings it out, that it is time that we put together a plan for what we want that road to look like one day. If we don't do that, we're going to be imposed upon by other forces, to be left unnamed, on how they want the road to be looked like. Whereas if we are proactive at this point and come together as a community and plan it out so that it minimizes the impact to the communities east and west, then at the point where this actually happens, and it will happen one day, when it happens, it will be built in a way that is most palable to our, to the communities that surround it. So I, I know Kathy's out of, out of, out of town at the moment, but I will have a conversation with Kathy, see if we can start something going there. And I've had this conversation preliminary with Kathy in the past, so I'm not expecting any, any, any bad repercussions there. But it is, it is sensitive, as I think we all know. And, but I think regardless of how you feel about the road, if we are proactive and putting together a plan for it to protect both communities, that will serve us well over time. So, thank you.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. You know, we've been talking about 184th since I lived here, before we were a town. We've had endless meetings and a lot of controversy, but if you just look around us, what's going on, Weston is now going vertical with high rises, and we're going to just see the population explode and the traffic at 8:00 in the morning. We got the school that went in out west there, and we need this north-south connector to relieve our internal roads. 185th Way, 186th Avenue is, it's a residential street, and it's, it's the only thoroughfare that connects in that area there off of Bonaventure, and we need an alternate. So I hope it gets done sooner than 2045, but we do need a plan on it. I feel two lanes the way to go, but we need to get it done and probably done as soon as possible. And the, the population is just going to keep exploding in the area around us, and we're going to continue feeling the pressures on the roads that we have. So really, this, this is a good project to get done, and we really need it. We need it now. We don't need it in 20 years. Thank you.
Build the road, and they will come. I thought the Comprehensive Plan, I know I sat in on a lot of it, and we only wanted two lanes. There were no entrances or exits off of that road. And in order to keep the traffic flowing, but not at 80 miles an hour, because it would be a direct run from Weston to Pines, there were going to be possibly turnarounds, or roundabouts. And I live on Dykes Road, which is a two-lane road, and I can attest to, it's one of the main thoroughfares for Pines to connect with Weston and Weston with Pines. And the light has helped, but I feel every day more and more like I live in the city. And I fight every day to hang on to country. The more they build, the more impact it makes, and my fear is unless we can stop the development in our own town at Sessas, if it becomes one acre home sites, Dykes Road will be a four-lane superhighway, because it is in Weston and it is in Pines. So you need to think about it out west as well, and you need to fight hard now to keep it the way it is. A two-lane road with, with roundabouts to slow it down, because it isn't going to bother anybody on either side, because they're not going to be trying to get in on it. So it's going to divide the town. It's going to make a freeway out of that road.
Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. I'd like to make a, an observation or statement here related to this item. I would... I would tell you that I've always been in a protective mode for Rolling Oaks, in whatever fashion that was, and how it is moving forward. So I've gotta tell ya, I'm going to, whatever the council member for that district supports is what I'm gonna go with. So.
No pressure.
No. Anybody have any other comments?
I'm not gonna touch that one yet. Yeah, scared, scared is, is really a good word, because none of us want it. But yet, is it necessary? Do we need it for relief? And sometimes, getting something done the way we want it, as opposed to the way somebody else is going to dictate to us, is the lesser of two evils. Kinda like, you either become a town, or you're gonna be annexed. So, we better do something quick. That's basically the, kinda the way I look at it. You know, I'm, I'm not afraid to plant my feet firmly and say, "No, you know, go away. Don't come in here anymore, stay, stay in your own area." You know, "Don't use me as a roadway and a cut-through." But it just looks inevitable, and if I can do something to curve it, and to have it nice, and I believe at one time, I thought we had some renderings of what we wanted that 184th, if it ever came.
We do.
We had what it would look like with two lanes. One-way, one-way, oak trees, big berms, fencing, whatever. So, I know that was there, but, like I said, I, this is, this is sticky wicket. Ooh.
Let me, let me jump in.
Go ahead.
Everybody kinda knows how my community feels about 184th, and, and I've articulated on numerous occasions that I'm not for 184th. Having said that, you know, it, it, it's probably gonna be inevitable, maybe not in my lifetime, but it'll, I think it'll eventually, as Steve's mentioned, that it'll eventually get built. And we have put in, there is MPO resolutions that it's only a two-lane road. As I recall, it was actually championed by Mayor Frank Ortes, I think, if memory serves. We do have a cross-section, a conceptual cross-section of the two-lane road with buffers on both sides, and we were adamant about the east side not having, as Mr. Hollingsworth pointed out, in the Comprehensive Land Use, about no openings on the east side, and a possibility of openings on the west side. You know, there's a lot of caveats, and a lot of ground that has to be covered between now and then, and, you know, it, it, there's a lot of work that would have to be done. This is, and this is something that's being considered for the 2045 plan. That's as far out as you can go at this point. I wanna point that out, you know. One of the things I believe that we do up here, we have a responsibility to everybody in the town, no matter where you live, or what your concerns are. I don't believe 184th will benefit the town, I think it will be, it'll, you'll be taking pressure off of one street and putting it onto a, from somebody's front yard to somebody's backyard, or front yard, depending on their orientation. So I, I think we'd be shifting problems, but, and I don't believe that's the solution. I'm totally committed to the whole one-way-in, one-way-out concept of all our roads, where we would pour out onto feeder roads of Griffin Road or Sheridan, you know, something to that effect, depending on, on where, you know, how it would line up. And this is, and I'm just reiterating items that I have expressed over the, the last 10 years, and my community has expressed too that. You know, having said all that, I believe one of the things that we need to do while we are up here is a, a unified council. I really believe that, and I, and I'm starting to see fractions that, you know, and different things that, that, and I'm not happy seeing, you know, we need to be five ships sailing in one direction, and we need to be servicing the people that are out there. And I will support this. I feel that it'll eventually come around, and it needs to come around to the way we want it, not what's being dictated, you know, to us. You know, with, you know, all the caveats that are gonna, you know, occur over that time. So, I just wanna make that very plain. I, I don't, I don't think it will benefit the town, but I know it's coming. And I, you'd be foolish not to, not to recognize that, you know. I, we, we don't run around here and stick our head in the sand, you know, and pretend it's gonna go away. It's eventually gonna come our way.
I want to, though.
Huh?
I want to.
Well, that was why I made the motion to, to approve, you know, 'cause I wanted to recognize it. I, I firmly believe that a unified council on public works matters and items that benefit all of us, even though I have my doubts, we need to be united on that. So I just wanna mention that.
Gary, appreciate your open mind. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You know, we hear a lot from the people that live on that corridor. I need to move my chair. Sorry. We hear a lot of, from the people that live on the 185th, 186th corridor, and my heart goes out to them. I mean, nobody needs 10,000 cars a day going past their house. There, there's, there's another issue with building this road that never comes up, because those people haven't heard anything, and they don't come to our meetings. If you draw that line south all the way to Sheridan Street, there's a whole bunch of people with barns and pastures and areas that, that they store their equipment on, their boats on, all that, right up against where this, or right in the path of where this road would go.
It's one of those caveats I was talking about.
Right, right. You know, we, we worry, well, we don't want it in our backyard, and, and, but I, my heart goes out to those people whenever this happens, because they're gonna give up a chunk of their property, whether they like it or not. And, like I said, I've looked at the aerials over the years. There's barns in the way, there's all sorts of things. So it's, it's gonna impact people in a very negative way, as it'll, it'll definitely help certain people, you know, and, and that's a big chunk of, of my community that are impacted by it. But there are gonna be people out there with the torches and pitchforks, don't build the road, not because of all the things we continually talk about, it's because it's gonna ruin their lifestyle. So, there's, it's a, it's a challenge. But, you know, the, the beauty of 2045, and I hope I'm still around at that point, but the beauty of that is, there can be a lot of improvements in the technologies between now and then that can relieve noise to the backyards. I mean, just, working for FDOT for a couple of years, I saw dramatic changes in the way they built their sound walls. And the sound walls they build today are no, nothing like the ones they built, for example, on the Sawgrass 15, 20 years ago. So they, I'm, I'm optimistic that when this does go through, 'cause I agree, sooner or later, we'll either be overpowered by our neighbors to the north and the south, or the Florida Legislature may get enough people screaming to them, that they push the money to FDOT and it happens. But I agree with Steve, and, and I know we've done a lot of homework, but we probably ought to assemble that as a plan to put in front of the MPO, so they know we're serious about this. And we've got a plan, here's what we want. So.
Sounds like a great idea for 2044.
Yeah, 2044. But, but you have to also remember too, the people in that particular area that have wanted it for so long, we're not fulfilling their needs.
Right.
And it's the squeaky wheel, I guess, that gets the oil. For example, and I'm gonna bring up tractor supply, there was a certain area that didn't want it. So we decided, you know, they're adamant about it. It's going, they felt it was going to affect them, and you supported it. What if you get enough people in here from that corridor that come in here and say, "We absolutely don't want it, you have to stop it." Now, there's only so much we can do, you know, legally. I mean, if state overrides everything and says, "Hey, we've done our studies, it is truly needed for safety and everything else, we're doing it." That's where you need to have your own plan, and this is what we would like then. If we have to cower down in any way, shape, or form, then let's do it our way, and not their way, because their way would probably end up a four-lane highway, and it would affect so much, it would ruin, ruin everything.
With toll gates on both ends.
Yes, yes, yes. By the way, some of these new roadways that they're putting in, they're not going to put tolls in-
Nonsense.
-as of now.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean down the road, they might not put in a toll.
Yeah, they haven't built a-
You're not, you're not gonna be able to drive down a road without a toll.
They haven't built a highway in Florida since, I believe it's 94, without making it a toll road. I'm talking highways, not side streets. So.
All right, we good? Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Resolution?
Five ships, all sailed the same way.
Mayor, item number 11 on the agenda has one Scrivener's error that we just want to announce. The name of the company that is doing the purchase, that we're seeking to purchase the extraction tools from is actually named Fire Rescue Systems Unlimited LLC. It was written improperly in the header, but I'm sure we're gonna read it in the record properly now.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting the fiscal year 2017 assistance to firefighters' grant, AFG Award, authorizing the purchase of extrication tools from Rescue Systems Unlimited LLC in the amount of $30,860.00, and a thermal imaging camera from 10-8 Fire Equipment in the amount of $7,392.60. Approving a fiscal year 2018, 2019 restricted fire control fund balance budget amendment in the amount of $1,913.00, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Darren, you wanna get up and speak before I open the public?
Good evening, everybody. Darren Bach, Captain-
Into the mic, I think.
Good evening, everybody. Darren Bach, Captain, Southwest Ranches Fire. Basically, what this is, is we receive the assistance of firefighters' grants, federal grant that we apply for every year to purchase this equipment. It's, it's needed, and the price is right with the grant funding. Our older equipment is not operational right now, so we definitely need this replacement equipment.
Okay, thanks. I'll open the public. Public comment on this matter?
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Doesn't the Davy truck have this equipment on it?
This is grant, this is through a grant.
So it would be, is it a matching grant, or is it?
No, our end's 1,900, I believe.
Yeah, the town cost is $1,900 for almost $40,000 in equipment combined. This would put, the company that we're buying from, John, is the same company that Davy buys their equipment from, so all the firefighters train on it. The goal is, if we have an emergency like that, whoever's first on site, we wanna make sure the equipment's there and on that truck. So for $1,900, we're picking up in excess of $30,000 of equipment.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment closed, back to us. Any questions? No, we're good. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor, do you want me to address this?
Yes, please.
Sure, this was the agenda item that you asked to come back about the Terra Ranches condition of approval, whether or not they had to get a, a, build the turn lane on 100 and, what was it, 172?
Whether it was the same.
Second, whether or not it should be before or after COs or permits, et cetera. Just to, to clarify the record on this, the, the, the property owner, which is now Toll Brothers, has asked us to not consider this item and to withdraw it from the record. But they, they just wanted me to clarify something, and, and the mayor did as well. And that is, when a company like Toll Brother constructs homes, they generally wait for a certain number of homes to be purchased, and then they start constructing them all at once. So what they meant to convey to the council that they, was not conveyed properly at all, is that they may pull five home permits at the same time, you know, to start the process of pouring all the foundations at the same time. But that doesn't mean that all houses are gonna come online at the same time, but they pull permits simultaneously. So as a result, that's why they were seeking to not build the roads until certain houses got COs. We did it based on permit, but they've withdrawn this item from, for consideration. But they just asked me to clarify the record and to thank the mayor so much for speaking on their behalf, and they apologized for not being here at the meeting.
Hi, I have a question.
Sure.
How does that affect anybody else coming in to do something like that on a road? Do we say, "Well, you fit in Category A, Category B, or now you're Category C"? Because my understanding was, we were gonna keep it all the same. And, and I understood it, it was for three of them. And I don't know where the mistake came from, or who made the mistake, it doesn't really matter, but just doesn't seem like we're living up to what we agreed to, what our word was. So if somebody else comes in to develop an area, what do they go with? Now we come up with another thing?
Well, now you have two choices.
And it's always nice to have two choices, but there's, there's a good thing in consistency. You know, it keeps all the little problems out.
One of the things I think we should consider at this point is the town policy. Why don't we have Keith and, and Jeff Cadem's sit down and put their heads together and collectively come up with what they think, and make a recommendation to the council at some future date?
That's a good idea. I like that.
Happy to do so. This item was withdrawn by Toll Brothers, though they don't wish the council to consider it anymore. But again, they thank the council very much for looking into this item.
I, I, I think my only dilemma was the fact that I was under the impression, I was also told that it was gonna be the same, and it was brought to us, was the same, and what we passed was not the same. So, ultimately, I did get a phone call from Jeff Cadem apologizing that, that it wasn't the same. So I don't know where the mistake was made, or how it happened, but it was clearly a mistake on our side. And they didn't wanna open it back up, they just said they'd live with it. But it is what it is. I just feel bad that we didn't wanna fix the problem. But it is what it is, and we'll move on.
Well, like Gary said, if you come up with something, then, you know, we're not gonna make fish of one and follow the other down the road. It's all gonna be consistent, so I think that was a good idea.
All right. So Keith, you guys have a mission?
Homework.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.